It's the time for the day's meeting, the November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. Meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners this time. I'll call a meeting in a quarter. I'm out of the chair. Do we have a forum?
Yes, sir. We have forum.
All right. Thank you. Next, I recognize Tony Berry, who's gonna lead tonight's pledge and get the nice indication. Tony.
(inaudible) (inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's break it down. Dear Father, I thank you for this day and for this evening that we're all allowed to be here and come together. I would ask that you be with the Board of Commissioners before us and guide them in making the decisions that they make and to the best of their ability to make it certain that they're good for all citizens of Cleveland County. Father, we've recently been through a hard election and we thank you for the outcome of that and I realize you're in charge. You're in charge of everything you can do here. Father, I'd like to ask a special blessing and a special thank you to Mr. Ronnie Whitstein for the many years that he has served this county. He has been a gentleman and a scholar with your leadership of which I'm sure. Father, we go about this business tonight. Again, God has keep us, give us patience, and patience will breed good outcomes. We ask for each of these blessings through your Son of Man, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Next, we recognize any elected officials who might be present.
That's the harness register of these.
Uh, next, we recognize any veterans.
Names, right? Names.
Scott.
Right, sir.
Steve Padgett, Army.
David Cotton, Navy.
Okay, we have a county pin. Does anyone want to have a county pin?
He doesn't.
We had these pins made a few year ago and it's the county logo underneath it, so it represents our business.
Uh, next, we recognize any law enforcement present.
Danny Allen, with them to your office.
Thank you for the country office.
And last, we recognize any county department heads.
Chris Martin, planning.
Mary Melt, Mrs. Gagian. Rebecca Johnson, Social Services.
Coach Adam from Finance.
Sherri Lander, Tribe.
Next, before you, Commissioners, we have the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting with that. Is there a motion to adopt or is there any amendments to the agenda?
I'll make a motion. We adopt the proposed agenda as written.
Second.
Any discussion? Here none, all in favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, next, public comment. About a court committee by sign up for a comment.
No, sir. No one signed up.
So we'll forego that with that. Commissioners, next on before us is the consent agenda. We've represented the consent agenda as part of our package. It had time to review with that. Is there a motion to adopt a consent agenda as presented?
Sir, moved.
Any discussion? Here none, all in favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimous as well. Next, we have three public hearings tonight. It's a matter of court.
After the public hearing has been opened, citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their address to the board by stating their name and address. Discussions between speakers and the board members of the audience, I'm sorry. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. A public hearing is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. All comments from the speaker shall be directly related to the subject of the public hearing. Each speaker is allotted five minutes to address the board. A speaker is not permitted to share, reserve, or relinquish any remaining time allocated to them to another speaker.
All right. Thank you, Chris, if you want to come forward. We have three, as I said earlier, we have three tonight. The first one is present, Chris is gonna present the case, planning case twenty-four dash fifteen. This is actually a text amendment to the U D O, the Unified Development Ordinance Code, section twelve dash one twenty-four. This is add non-residential building construction uses to heavy industrial zoning district as a permitted use. Chris?
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Board. Good to be here. We have for you tonight three requests for code amendments. The first being a, an amendment to the text, in this case, twenty-four dash fifteen. And the petitioner is Yates Metcom, and they're asking to add non-residential building construction services to the heavy industrial zoning district. That use includes construction services that build large facilities such as shop, shopping centers, hospitals, and parking garages. So anything that's related to that type of construction. Our current ordinance only allows that use in general business and the light industrial zoning district. And again, they're asking to add it to not only those two, but add it to the third, heavy industrial zoning district. And we have presented this item to the planning board and they reviewed and they, they saw no issues with this use. They felt like the, this type of business would be a fit in those categories of heavy industrial and would be a fit and compatible with those types of uses that are allowed in that district. And they recommend approval. And tonight, tonight's we'll hold a public hearing and decide to approve or deny the request. And I can answer any questions.
What questions do we have? Could you go back to the chart?
You can see on the chart that in the white, the, this use is already allowed in general business along the corridor and the light industrial. And the request is to add it into that yellow box, add it into the heavy industrial zoning district. And this chart is straight out of the ordinance.
Any questions?
Not this time.
All right. So at this time, we'll declare the public hearing open. No one signed up to speak at the public hearing, so the public hearing is now closed. It's our time to discuss and then vote. So what questions does the board have?
I don't have any questions other than it makes sense to me if somebody's got a trailer for an office and parking equipment and all while they can be in heavy industrial like the others. I don't see that as a problem.
The heavy industrial, there's not a lot of things that can be done there. So I don't think it would hurt the quality of the, the areas that are zoned heavy industrial. So I don't see a problem with that. If everybody's ready, I'll make a motion that we approve the, the ordinance.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve. That's the proper second. Any final discussion? Here none, all in favor will say aye. Anybody opposed? All right, the carries unanimous. Chris, if you'll come back. Next is case twenty-four dash sixteen. This is a request to rezone parcel five four seven five four at three forty Beaver Down Church Road from rural agriculture to residential. Chris?
Your next item is a request to change the zoning of a parcel. The petitioner's Mr. Caleb Peeler, and he's asking to change a seventeen acre tract of land from a rural ag to residential. The difference between those two districts are that the rural ag requires a minimum of three acre lot size. It allows most any type of residential construction and, and also allows some non-residential agricultural supporting uses. The regular residential, which is the requested district, requires a half acre minimum lot size, so a smaller lot. Also allows for most any type of residential uses. The area is located along Beaver Down Church Road. It's seventeen acres. It's just southwest of Crest Middle School, which you can see in the aerial photo here. So here's the parcel outlined in red. The surrounding, immediate surrounding area is larger tracts of land, single-family dwellings on those tracts of land. But as you travel southwest towards Bull and Springs, you'll enter into some neighborhoods. Our zoning map shows that this area is mostly a residential style zoning. This seventeen acre tract with some adjacent parcels were rezoned to rural ag several years ago. And so the request would essentially change this parcel from the green to the white residential And our land use plan causes secondary growth, and I think either of those two districts could be considered, considered consistent with that land use plan designation. We presented this to the planning board and they recommended approval. They really just saw this as an extension of an existing residential zoning district because it was surrounding that parcel. And tonight we'll hold a public hearing and you can approve or deny the request. I can answer any questions.
Chris, could you put the map back up? What questions does the board have? Deal
None right now.
Okay. So the white is residential now?
The white color does represent the residential zoning district.
Listen, the floodplains or anything where it would, sort of a half acre would require an acre of land?
No, there, there's no standards. There were no situations that would require one acre. It would all be half acre if rezoned.
Till again, with that half acre, you gotta have septic tank and have repairs. So in the event that it was cut up and half acre tracts, it would be up to the health department to determine if there's enough land there and a half acre for a septic tank and a house.
Yes. If there, if there's no public sewer available, then septic would be the next available option for wastewater. When there's public sewer, the minimum lot size is fifteen thousand square feet. But when there's septic involved, it bumps up to a half acre as a minimum.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. With that, uh, thank you, Chris. Just stand by. This time I'll declare the pub, the public hearing open. We do have a couple would like to speak tonight on this. First, I'll recognize Mr. Scott McSwain.
My name is Alton Scott McSwain. I live at three oh nine Webb Road. It is the adjoining parcel next to this one, twenty acres, a little more, maybe a little less. I come to you tonight kind of conflicted. I'm not the kind of guy to say what somebody should do with their property. I don't believe anybody, they own it, they should be able to do as they please. My only concern is the effect it's gonna have on the value of my property. There are lots that are rural agricultural that have businesses built on them. Right next to this one, there's a dilapidated car wash with graffiti all over the walls. There's a supermarket with boarded up doors and windows. If you could build it on three acres, build it. But if you put houses every half acre in there, what does it do to my property value? I don't know the answer. I don't know what's gonna be done. My concern is the effect on my property value after everything's all said and done. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Next is Caleb Peeler.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. My name's Caleb Peeler. My address is two eleven Patton Drive, Shelby, North Carolina, two eight one five zero. I'm the civil engineer for this project. I reviewed the county's future land use plan, saw this area was identified as secondary growth, which is consistent with this proposed rezoning. It also matches all the surrounding residential zoning around the parcel. The concern about the adjacent property value following construction, I'm not a real estate agent or a, can't tell you about the market prices, but this will be a, a nice residential neighborhood similar to the adjacent residential neighborhoods off of Webb Road and across the street, which I believe would, would make the area better than having a vacant land and the dilapidated buildings adjacent to that. As Chris stated, all the surrounding area is residential and it's consistent with the future land use plan. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thanks to both of you guys. Chris, do you have anything else to add?
Not this time, sir.
All right. At this time, I'll close the public hearing. All right. Board, all the
I don't have a question, but I have a, a comment.
Okay.
With all the white residential area all the way around it, the, once you change it, it's gonna really make that piece of property come in, in line with all the area around it more than, more than it'll take away from it. So I don't see a problem with, with that property being changed.
Is there any other questions or comments?
If there's no other questions or comments, I'll make a motion that we approve the rezoning from rural agriculture to residential.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second. Need any further discussion? Here none, all of us in favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, the case, Chris, is twenty-four dash seventeen. This is a request to rezone two zero five and two one three Battleground Road from light industrial to general business.
Yes, sir. The next case is also a request to change the zoning district. And this is for two parcels, two adjoining parcels, parcels one oh five three one and one oh five three nine, totaling about five acres. The applicant represents the owner, Mr. Tom Crouch of the Moser Group. He's asking to rezone the parcels from the light industrial district to the general business zoning district. Your current light industrial zoning district allows some light manufacturing, warehousing, and distribution type of uses, while the requested general business district allows more professional personal service, office, and some limited wholesale type of uses. Usually your general business districts are located near major highways. This property is on Battleground Road near the interstate of Interstate eighty-five. And you can see it's the two parcels highlighted in red. And they're adjoining, adjoined by really a variety of uses. You've got some residential uses across the road. And then there's a campground being constructed on the parcel adjacent to these two properties here. And it's also zoned as general business. And then you, of course, you've got Interstate eighty-five with some, you know, a lot of industrial uses running along eighty-five and Battleground Avenue. The zoning district of these two parcels, as I said before, is light industrial, and that's represented by the blue color. And the requested district is general business represented by the red. And then you can see that there's red general business surrounding these two properties. And our land use map designates this area as primary growth, so either of these districts could be considered consistent with that designation. Our planning boards reviewed and they recommend approval. And they also saw this one as an extension of an existing zoning district. And with this one, there'll be a public hearing and you can approve or deny the request. I can answer any questions.
Can you go back to the map? Did we rezon that big parcel not long ago?
It's been about two years ago.
Okay.
Yep.
We did do that.
We did. This board did. And that was for the use of the RV park.
Well, the one, the one parcel is an old gas station, empty. And the other building, empty too, both of them.
There's, there's two vacant buildings sitting on those parcels. And I'm not, I'm not familiar with the history of those. I do believe one was a gas station at one time.
It was a gas station. I don't know what was in it, but they've been, they've been vacant a long time, ever since I.
Right.
So actually, it would be good that if they turned down, put something there, it's usable, in my opinion.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right. If not, at this time we'll declare the public hearing open. Was nobody signed up, right?
Correct. No one signed up.
All right. So the public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, what questions or discussion? Any questions or comment or further discussion we might have?
No discussion. Like say a comment, knowing that the old buildings have been there for vacant for so long, to be able to, to put something there and usable to enhance the tax base. If there's no more questions, I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Our motion second to approve the case, case twenty-four dash seventeen. With that, all in favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries as well. So that's the end of the public hearings. We have one closed session. Of a closed session, before we do that, we're gonna take the time for any commissioner comments, and we're gonna take the time to recognize Mr. Whitstein, Ronnie, and any other commissioners who want to comment. We want to thank you for your service and all that you've done for the county and this board and any of the other things that you've participated with throughout your career. You've sit on many boards and have worked for the betterment of the county and its citizens, and it's greatly appreciated. We hate to see you leave, but we understand your decision. But we want to thank you for your time and service to the county.
Okay.
So, any other commissioners?
I'd just like to say thank you for, uh, friendship, you and your wife. And, you know, we've got to go on a few little trips together, got to know each other a little better. And I appreciate your leadership. And you certainly helped me through, through these last few years. And I appreciate your leadership for the county and the community and, and the efforts you've made to make this a better place. And I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say I've enjoyed working with you, getting to know you, and I appreciate all you have done for the county.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate your time that we've served together and appreciate you taking in field all of them.
At, at this time, I'd like to, to read, read this because as most of you know, that if I sit here and talk, I could talk for a while. So I'm gonna read this so that I will keep it short and brief. And I'll read it in the, to the records. Tonight's my final Commissioner's report, although I will be on the board for a few more weeks. I'm assuming that December the second, when everybody else gets sworn in, I'll get sworn out. But I'd like to thank all the citizens of this county for allowing me to have the honor of sitting on this board for the last eight years. And I assure you that every vote I've made was for the, what I thought at the time was the best for all the citizens of Cleveland County. The county manager and staff have gone above and beyond their duties to help in everything that I've wanted to accomplish to make me look good to the public. And I sincerely thank you all. Cleveland County has been my home my entire life. Susan and I have ran a business for more than fifty years and have always wanted everything we did to make the county a better place. I know that the county is in a good position to move forward with all the projects this board has in progress and to continue to grow and develop into even a better place to live, work, and play. Now I can move on to whatever the Lord puts in my life. I've had a lot of people ask me what we're gonna do next. And I, I don't know, you know, but, but when it's right, I will know it. The last request I have for the rest of this board is for you to put aside any personal agendas and do what is best for every citizen in this county and to allow the manager and this wonderful staff we have to have the freedom to do what they do best. Again, thanks for allowing me to serve this county.
So Ronnie, we have a plaque if you want to come down.
I can't behind.
Oh, you can.
Yeah, we don't have a problem.
My co-governor deliberated a lot. This lady has stood beside him for fifty-two years and everything she's done is to make him happy.
So Ronnie, from what happened before, thank you for your service to the county. You've done a great job. Appreciate your leadership. And from what happened before, we'd like to present you this plaque. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else have anything before we go to closed session? All right. With not, the, we have a closed session tonight. So closed session, present the North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven eighty-three, to consult with the attorney employed or retained by a public body in order to preserve the attorney kind of privilege between the county attorney, between the attorney and the public body, which privileges hereby a knowledge. The public body may consider, give instructions to the attorney concerning handling our settlement of a claim, judicial action, mediation, arbitration, or administrative procedure. With that, I entertain a motion to enter into closed session.
Sir, moved.
Do we have a second? All in favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? The board should recognize we're now in closed session. The board should recognize we're now in closed session.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, we're adjourned.[1796.98]